Welcome, everybody, to Tuesday, May 2nd Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. Seven o'clock we'll have Citizens' input. Seven oh five we'll have the Board reorganization. By the way, it's good to be back.[15.01][15.01](Laughter).
What's changed?[17.01][17.01](Laughter).
Seven twenty Southeastern Regional School District FY-18 budget. Seven thirty Matthew Gonzalez update the Board about his ongoing Eagle Scout project. Seven forty-five Police Chief Baker, approved Police Chief Baker's amended contract. Seven fifty-five Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, discussed vote to reappoint Tracy Vassili as an associate member of the Planning Board with a term expiring five one eighteen. Eight oh five Foxborough Cultural Councils. Discussion vote on Jacqueline Howell becoming a member of the Foxborough Cultural Council. Eight fifteen Town Manager's Performance Evaluation. Town Manager's Performance Evaluation summary. Eight forty Selectmen's update. Eight fifty Town Manager's update. Nine o'clock Assistant Town Manager's update. And we have a bunch of action items. Chris, will you listen?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[92.11][92.11](Laughter).
Okay. Being seven o'clock, is anybody here for Citizens' input? No? Okay. We'll go right into the Board reorganization. So as typical on this annual basis, when there's a new election, the Board goes to a reorganization. It starts with the Chairman, the Vice Chair, and the Clerk. So we'll make a nomination, it'll be seconded, and then a Board vote. Now, we have a, we do have an option this year where nothing's changed. And if the Board would be amenable, we can leave everything as is. Or if the Board would like to reshuffle, we can do that, too. So I'll leave it up to the members and open up for some discussion.
I would make a motion to keep the Board exactly the way it is. I think you've done a great job.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think things are working. I know normally in the rotation, it would be the Vice Chair. I would love to have you stay on as Chairman.
Okay.
Well, you haven't got anything else to do this year, Chris, right?[177.31][177.31](Laughter).
I didn't want to throw excuses out.
I have confidence that anyone here could lead this Board, but I thought it was a good year. It was always forward and confidence in us.
It was a good opportunity for us, too. I mean, to have two years in a row saying for members.
Doesn't happen very often. I've not seen it happen very often, to be honest with you.
And I'm finally grasping this whole clerk thing, so.
All right.[207.45][207.45](Laughter). So if that's a motion, I'll second it.[210.23][210.23](Laughter). To keep the Board as it is.
So do we have to do this individually, anyway, or just move to keep the Board as is?
Well, there's not gonna be any changes.
Yeah, I think what we've done in the past, you make a motion, you second it, and then if anyone else wants to make a different motion, you second that, and then you take it in turn of what it came up, so.
Move to keep the Board as is.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Congratulations.
That was easy.
Congratulations to all three of you.
Yeah. Okay, well, Chief has someplace to go.
Save on stationery.
So we're gonna take, we're gonna take the Chief out of order. Hope nobody minds. Chief?
Yeah, no, just have a seat.
Have a seat.
Just, it's a hot seat. We don't, I'm not gonna expect you to do anything. So the item that Chief Baker was here before is an amendment to his existing employment contract. The Chief, as you know, began employment with us in October of this past year and done a terrific job, by the way. I don't want to commend you on the work that you've done here so far. One of the things that, that he's identified is that, as you know, there's a big commitment to do, to manage a lot of events, particularly at Gillette Stadium and Patriot Place, and that typically the Police Department, Police Chief is head of that, head of those operations and providing, he's head of policing services for the stadium. Over the past number of years, the Chief has served in that role as a, as an hourly-paid Chief Baker has opted to present to the Board an option where he would be paid a fixed stipend per month managing a number of events, but not physically being there at those events, but others where he'll be managing, but through his, through his subordinate commanders. So this option is, was presented to the Board and was discussed with them, with you collectively. There seemed to be some measure of support for it, so therefore I'm bringing it back to you tonight for open, open discussion about the item itself and to see if there's any further thoughts before we proceed. What would happen is that if the Board approves this action, I would, I would sign it and then, and attach it to his existing contract. I'll wait for any questions.
Anybody on the Board have any questions or any further questions?
In the agreement that we got in, with this packet, the stipend would go until thirty September of two thousand and seventeen?
That's, that is correct.
So what happens after that?
Actually, the contract is a, is a three-year contract, right?
It's a three-and-a-half-year contract, so the modification would propose that stipend would be monthly through the end of the contract term, which is three-and-a-half years.
Okay, and what we got says through October, from October 3rd, two thousand and sixteen through to September 30th.
That's his base salary. I think that's the base salary.
Okay. So the stipend, then, would stay the same, the proposed number, the eighteen hundred throughout the entire contract?
Correct.
And it's actually less than what you originally proposed?
It is. I modified it slightly.
Taken more of a pay cut.
Just wanna make sure that the imbalance is tipped in your direction.
Much appreciated. That was the only question I had, really.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, it's firing in between when a high-salaried employee or someone of your position comes back to the Board and proposes a change that makes sense on a lot of different levels, but also saves the town money and to your, the detriment of your salary is gonna go down. So you don't see that often, so I just wanted to make people aware, this is not a grab to make more money by changing the contract, it's actually saving the town money and, and I think refining the process a little bit with the stadium, so.
And I think the reasons that you presented, I don't know if you wanna talk about it here, but from a leadership standpoint, makes all the sense in the world, and that defines what true leadership is. So thank you for that.
I appreciate that.
And I don't, I don't know if you wanna just, you know, have a, have a comment based on, you know, your reasoning behind it, but.
No, I'm, not really.[520.79][520.79](Laughter).
You know, I'm trying, you know, just trying to provide you and the people we serve with
honest, open, direct leadership, and this proposal made sense from my point of view because I'm not an hourly employee. I have an obligation that's twenty-four, you know, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and that's reflected in my regular work, and I want it to be reflected in this additional obligation that comes with being the Police Chief here in, in Foxborough.
Thank you for that. Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Move to approve Chief's amended contract.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? See none? All those in favor?
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, and as usual, ahead of schedule.
You have to listen to that.
That's why, that's why you would change with the two years.
I'll change that.
So we can take the Southeastern Regional School District fiscal eighteen budget.
Thank you for having us again this year. I'm Mark Morris, the School Business Manager, Southeastern Regional, and the representative from Foxborough, Steve Uden, is here with me as well tonight. Did everyone get the electronic version? So I'd just like to start off by saying, at our April 28th meeting, the budget was voted by the School Committee, so it is a voted budget. The total amount is twenty-six million, three seventy-six, one seventy-two for FY-18. If you look at the first part of the, the presentation at the top, the foundation budget, so the foundation budget for Southeastern is twenty-four million, six oh three, nine twenty-five. That's made up of two components, state aid, and that amount being fifteen million, five forty, nine forty-four, and local assessments of nine million, oh sixty-two, nine eighty-one. Right below that is the cost of transportation. So being the regional school, we have a regional reimbursement by the state, so we're not allowed to charge for transportation. And the transportation cost for FY-18 will be one million, four oh nine, one twenty-two. What I like to reiterate here is that when you do see your Senators, your Legislatures, Congressmen, to let them know that regional transportation is to be funded at a hundred percent by the state, but they always have the wording in there, "based on appropriation." So unfortunately, the state does not appropriate a hundred percent towards that, 'cause if they did, it'd be zero in the assessment column, but roughly seventy-two percent is what we're looking at right now this year for reimbursement from the state, leaving four oh six, three eighty in local assessments for the regional transportation piece. So again, when you do see your Legislatures and Congressmen, just reiterate how important regional transportation reimbursement is to the towns, 'cause again, if that was funded a hundred percent, the obligation to the towns would be zero.
You said it was at seventy-two percent?
Roughly seventy-two is the ballpark.
Is that historically always been around there?
It's since, from where I can see, it's been anywhere from as low as eighteen percent to as high as roughly eighty-two percent. Never been at a hundred percent, never in the nineties, but, so seventy-two is actually, from what we can see lately, that it's not a bad place to be. But just keep in mind, any mid-year cuts, nine-seat cuts that the government does make could affect regional transportation. And that's why it's very important to let them know how important it is to the towns, 'cause it does affect education.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, do you know if the Senate version of the budget has any difference, any increase in item?
From what we've heard, it should not. If anything, it may increase it somewhat, they're trying to push to increase that, but I have not seen this. So roughly middle of this month, the third week of May, will, that budget will come out. We can take a look at there.
Okay.
So let's turn to the next page. The enrollment for the town of Foxborough is at twenty-eight students. Of our total enrollment's fifteen oh eight, so that's one point nine percent of our total enrollment comes with the town of Foxborough, and that's an increase of one student from last year. So last year we were at twenty-seven, this year we're at twenty-eight students. And you can see the, the breakdown there from the other towns and cities that we represent, with their breakdowns.
Could I, Mr. Chairman, may I introduce an interesting, fun fact at this, at this point?
Sure.
Southeastern Regional has what's called a blind admissions process. So students apply and go through a fairly vigorous interview process and have their grades assessed. We had, what, approximately nine hundred applicants, if I'm not correct, thereabouts, for about three hundred and...
Seventy-five spots.
Seventy-five seats, three hundred and seventy-five seats for the whole school from all the districts, from all the towns represented by the Regional School District. We've had one student leave in that, which is a remarkable number for retention of students, both in a proper vetting and fit in the school program, as well as the student wanting to stay and being able to stay in the school. I, I think that's a phenomenal number. We have more people applying for, for this vocational tech school than we could possibly have seats for. And I think that's a testament to what the faculty and staff has been doing over the years there, especially with the students from Foxborough that are staying. We had one leave, but that was an understandable.
On average, from Foxborough, how many students apply each year?
Well, last year, I think there were, like, four or five.
I don't, I don't have that number offhand. I could find out for...
From parents in the community, it's kind of, it's, it's almost semi-private. I don't look into that unless there's a spike and I'm notified, like, wow, there's a lot of students going there. But the, all the students that I know that applied got in from Foxborough, and actually, statistically, it's not likely, but it's possible, because the way admissions are carried out for S E R S D, Southeastern Regional School District, it's possible for any one or number of the communities that the school serves to not have students get into the program. It's not likely, and if there's a hump, I am happy to, wherever it's ethically proper, get involved if there's a student applying or something like that, again, with the bubble of ethics being the core to that. But I've, I've worked with about three different families, two from Foxborough and one from another town, helping their students sort of shepherd through the administrivia of application, and it's gone very well. I'm sorry, Mark.
No, that's fine. No, I, I just reiterate, it is a blind enrollment process, so once the students apply, it's based on their grades, attendance, behavior.
Behavior.
And then, once they have been accepted, is once we find out exactly where they're actually, what town or city they're coming from. So again, prior to that, we have no knowledge of their needs, if they're in special education needs or anything of that nature, until after they've been approved or accepted at the So on page three, you can see that the increase of our budget for FY-18 is three point three percent. Our total enrollment increase is two point seven percent. And actually, we spoke about regional transportation earlier, the seventy-two percent is a little bit higher than last year, so there's actually a two percent decrease in the actual transportation amount from FY-17 to FY-18. And there's some statistical history there from FY-10 through FY-18 on our budget history there, if you'd like to take a look. Again, feel free to stop me at any time, or I can go through the presentation, you can ask questions at the end, totally acceptable.
Do you know what your average cost per student is?
Yeah, if, if you wanna jump to page five.
No, no, we, we...
Okay, yeah. So on page four, it's probably the most important piece of the presentation, is, you know, what is the cost to Foxborough for FY-18? If you look at the bottom half, the town of Foxborough's FY-18 assessment is three hundred ninety-five thousand, seven sixty-four, and that is an increase of twenty-five thousand, five hundred and nine dollars from the FY-17 school year.
And that, that assessment is based on a formulary?
This is chapter seventy-four, good from the state, correct. Which takes into consideration property values, income or wealth of the town, student enrollment as well.
And to Mark's point about the transportation, if I may interrupt, to Mark's point about the transportation and what's going on at the State House, chapter seventy is also a formula that is, to many, an enigma, and some may say archaic, but it is going under review now. If you read the papers, you'll see that there's some state Senators and Representatives looking at revisiting the entire chapter seventy, which would apply to what, like, say, Bill and Debbie come to talk about as well. Seventy is seventy. It affects all school districts.
So on page five, to, to your question, Mr. Feldman, the student cost, again, I don't have a calculator, but sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars, I believe, if you add up there, per student. And you can see that each one of the communities, the student cost is the same for each community. The only difference is how much state aid the community's received, the difference. So that sixteen thousand, nine twelve is the same for every one of our students, but in the town of Brockton, obviously, they, they receive more, or the city of Brockton, they receive more state aid, so their assessment cost per student is less than some of the other communities. But you can see that by community there, so we've put this chart in new this year, usually we don't have this chart, but it's usually a pretty common question is, what is the cost per student? So just to reiterate, it is the same for all students. The only difference is really in the state aid. So you can see, the only piece of those, that pie graph that we can really control is that top sliver at the very top. The bottom is, is the assessments and the, the state aid.
Yeah, so looking at the pie chart, fourteen thousand is, is the local assessment, and the twenty-seven hundred is, is the state aid?
Is the state aid, correct.
Question of it?
Okay.
Thank you.
So Chairman, with respect to East Bridgewater's, I'm actually surprised to see that break down the way it is. I can understand Brockton, but surprised to see East Bridgewater with such a high percentage of state aid.
So, if I had, again, I don't have the information with me, if I had to guess, I would presume their, their income is lower than most towns, and their property values are probably on, on the lower side. The good news about this chart is, for the town of Foxborough, looks like the town is being run well by administration. Property values are above normal, or not above, or are at the, at the higher end, and the values and the income of the town are doing well. So if you turn to the next page, you'll see that it looks like the municipal revenue growth factor for the town of Foxborough is five point zero-three percent, where the state average is roughly two and a half percent. So that's roughly a percent and a half above state average. So that's kudos to the administration and to the town, but on the other side of the coin is, the stakes is that you can afford more towards education and things of that nature.
Bill, would you like me to follow up on that and get back to you?
Yeah, I'm just curious. I, I don't know what the factors are for that.
Yeah, I could, I, on page six, we have one of these for every one of our towns. I can get you that, page six for...
That'd be great.
East Bridgewater, it'll break down over there. Just put it all through.
It's not gonna, doesn't change my opinion of the budget.
No, 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 exactly.
Just curious.
Correct.
Yeah, especially considering East Bridgewater, like, two years ago, has a brand-new state-of-the-art high school.
Yeah, I'm just really surprised, kinda surprised at that number.
I'll follow up with you on that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Just, do you know if your comprehensive enrollment in the school, is it up or down this year for Foxborough?
It's steady.
It's, yeah, it hasn't really...
It's fairly steady.
There's hasn't been significant change either way.
So it looks like in FY-17, Foxborough had two thousand, six hundred and forty-eight enrolled students, and for FY-18, two thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven. So it looks like there's a decrease there, students, so, so that also, so with Southeastern having an increase and Foxborough having a decrease, the state aid, the target aid actually shifts as well, so you see some of that difference there as well with the assessment due to enrollment.
Okay.
And that's on page, I just jumped in on page eleven. No, I'm sorry. That's on page twelve, that information. I also like to, on page six, just highlight that from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and eighteen, Southeastern's enrollment from Foxborough is down three percent, and our per-people cost is up forty-two percent, while the Foxborough comprehensive schools' enrollment is down nine percent, and per-people cost is up forty-four percent. So that's very, pretty much in line there, based on the enrollment in the town. You could also see on page seven that the town's net school spending is above the minimum. The solid line is the actual net school spending, and the dotted line is the required. And as I iterated on the first page, we're at minimum net school spending, so on page eight, you see that our, our dotted line and our solid line of net school spending, the actual to the required, one overlaps the other, so we are at the minimum required by the town, oh, by, I'm at the state, I'm sorry. So that's really my presentation in a nutshell. I can go into more depth if you have any further questions, or I can get into more detail in any one of these slides, if you like.
Can I just compliment your template?
Oh, thank you.
I think it's very easy to understand, and I imagine you go to every town and do this?
We, we do.
Yeah.
So all nine communities.
It's a great job.
Great presentations.
Thank you.
Mark was at the financial, was at AdCom a few weeks ago, too, so it's, about town...
I'm actually not sure if you have an actual budget number for the town meeting, but I had given Randy a preliminary number earlier in the year, which was actually a little higher than what we, what actually came in.
I think he actually is aware of the low numbers.
Oh, yeah. I've, I've made Randy aware, so I just, again, to his, to his behalf, I didn't get it to him till rather recently, so I'm not sure if he's passed it on yet.
Okay.
Just so you know.
You may not know this, you know, being fairly new to the, to the committee, but Mark and Randy are in close contact, and Randy's also been very useful to Southeastern in certain consulting roles for us, or advice.
Yeah, through our MSBA project, Randy was a, was a great asset to have with his experience. So I was new to the position at the time, we had an MSBA project coming on, so Randy was more than happy to help out and a great asset.
Excellent. Any CapEx, major CapEx?
No, the last one we completed roughly just about a year ago was our football stadium, the artificial turf. As of right now, we just, we're doing a redesign on our baseball field, because unfortunately, our backstop to our home plate is roughly ten to fifteen feet from the existing rail lines that are proposed to South Coast, so if that was to ever go through, so we're actually looking to mitigate that at this point, rather than wait until something comes through, 'cause it wouldn't be a very safe atmosphere to be having a baseball game in the South Coast rail. So we're actually, we're redesigning those fields right now, but that, that's the, to the max of what we're looking at right now.
Dave, also to that point, we, Southeastern is very similar to Foxborough, or exactly similar to Foxborough, in that we're also our own bus company. So for CapEx spending, you know, there's, you know, new equipment that has to be procured and updated, but it never goes into disrepair, or a couple of pickup trucks here and there for, for grounds and that sort of thing, but for student transportation and, and safety of faculty and people coming on campus, that's where we spend the money, is on big yellow things that hold a lot of people.
Great presentation today. Thank you.
And I'd like to, if you've never been to the school, I'd love to invite you there, come in, take a look, see what the students are doing. This past year, they actually built a tiny house, a lot of the shops got together, actually having a raffle for it, so if anyone was interested in a ticket, let me know. But, yeah, the students take pride. Again, they come together and they're really, you know, you talk to any one of the students that are involved, they're very excited to let you know, take you on a tour of the tiny house, and let you know exactly how it was built and what their part and, or their role in building it was.
Excellent.
So yeah, if you're ever available, let myself know, let Steve know, Superintendent, we'd be more than happy to give you a tour and take you through the school. I think you'd be impressed to see what's going on.
Can we just tell them real fast about Makerspace? Do you have a minute?
Yeah. So...
It's a remarkable thing going on.
The Makerspace concept is a concept, it's, it's a vocational shop where all the shops kind of come and collaborate together. So the tiny house was the first project in the Makerspace, so we were able to bring together electrical, plumbing, carpentry, our CAD design, DVC, everyone got together and did their role from start to finish in building the make, the tiny house. So they've actually, they're doing the set for the Addams Family musical that's being presented this weekend at the school.
Ten bucks, chief admission.
So yeah, so it's a place where all the shops can kind of collaborate and have real, real-world experience versus just being in their shop and just learning, you know, how plumbers work, how electrical, electricians work, how, they kind of come together, so they have to work together and solve different things that come up throughout the building process.
No, you let, you let students be the construction managers and...
Correct. So under supervision of, of course, yeah.
Right, but it's all, it's all managed by the students.
It's all managed, again, so they have an area where they kind of have some whiteboards, some scenery, they'll sit down, discuss what they want, you know, what the next project's gonna be, kind of lay it all out, draw it out, bring it to CAD, CAD will come in, design it for them, get it, get the plans ready, and then every morning, they have a morning meeting, get together on what the, what the, that project for the day is, what piece they were gonna work on, get it done, and then proceed forward.
It's a completely collaborative environment, including, like you was talking about, the wall space, there's a, an arched whiteboard that goes almost larger than where this board sits in an arc. And so the designs are just drawn out and the brainstorming's done all right there with comfortable chairs for the students and the faculty and any advisors we may have from, from outside. So it's not just a bunch of people sitting around a table, drawing on cocktail napkins, it's a completely collaborative environment. It's great for the students for long-term career development, makes them familiar with what's out there.
It's nice.
Really cool. You should come see us. If anybody wants to come see us, please call us.
We should do that.
Yeah, let myself know, Steve, or...
Yep. Parking is free.[1772.03][1772.03](Laughter).
There's no action required.
No, it, it, it's part of the, it's included, it's part of the budget process.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, have a great night.
All right, appreciate it.
Dave, congratulations.
Thank you.
It was a landslide.
Congratulations.
Good night. Okay. Seven thirty? No, seven thirty-one. Matt, you wanna come up?
Yes, please.
You don't have to say please. Welcome back.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Wanna give us an update of how you're doing?
Yep, uh, I'm still Matthew Gonzales, uh, still an Eagle Scout candidate, still troop thirty-two. I came in front of the board, uh, for my Eagle Scout project. It, it's to redo the flag placement and the get, uh, purchasing and, uh, maintaining the new flags and poles. Uh, since I last spoke to the board, I had redesigned the layout with Mr. Gallagher from the Town Highway Department, and the holes are marked and ready to be drilled. I had sent order, or I have order forms out, uh, I've gotten a good amount of them back. And with that, I have funding and I have purchased poles and flags. And I'm getting the dog tags made that are gonna be on the actual poles. That's all coming in for, uh, what I have. I have donation forms with me if anyone, uh, was not able to, uh, find them at town hall. And the deadline was yesterday for it, but, uh, there's still a couple of flags that need sponsors. So I have forms with me if any of you want them. I haven't seen any of them come through the mail yet, so I.
I'll take, uh, two.
Yep, all right. And I hope to have them displayed for Memorial Day.
That's your, that's your, what, what's your, uh, target deadline?
Target deadline, uh, Memorial Day, which is the thirty.
Well, that's, that's your install. What's your target deadline for, for ordering and getting everything?
Oh, uh, all the stuff is ordered, so it's shipping.
So you're just, you're just short on some, some donations?
Yep, just a couple more sponsors for the flags and.
Okay, send those forms up here.
Yeah, I have a.
We'll see if we can help you out.
Envelope full of them.
Excellent.
How many additional flags are you adding?
Um, I, my original plan was for sixty flags. What I, my current map has ninety-one flags, which, uh, go down all the side streets off of the common and down in front of where the new town hall will be.
If I wanted to do two flags, separate?
Uh, you, two forms. Yep. I also included the envelopes just to make it easy on you. And a mailing address all on it, so.
You're a true scout, always prepared, right?
Mm-hmm, yep.
What, no stamp?
Uh, no, sorry.
Like you're sending it in. Hand deliver it.
I know. Matthew, where, where do you store all the flags when they're all, is it still in the, um, the shed?
Yep, they're all in the steamer shed. Uh, I'm gonna have to expand a little bit more in there, but they all will be in the steamer shed.
They'll all fit?
They will all fit, yeah.
The new ones that you're placing, same concept, same type of pole, same type of flag?
Yep, uh, ten-foot aluminum poles, three-by-five American nylon embroidered flags. Uh, they'll all have toppers on them and the plaques are pretty much the only big difference.
And it's gonna be a dog tag?
It's gonna be the dog tag style.
And on that tag, it could be like?
It'll, uh, the slips, they say, in memory of, uh, donated by, and then you have space to fill out. I left this, uh, spacing on the forms form. I still have, uh, a couple, only a handful at, uh, town hall, but they're still up there if, uh, anyone watching here wants to grab one.
Are you kidding? This is must-see TV.
They might meet you in the parking lot and grab it. How's, uh, the whole process been for you from the Eagle Scout project perspective?
Um, it hasn't been, uh, too rough. I've just put a lot of time into making sure I'm getting the best deals. Nothing, uh, thank you, uh, nothing much, uh, really.
So the?
A lot of hours, just.
Poles have been ordered, flags have been ordered, so what is your plan once everything comes in? How are you gonna assemble it all?
Some people have reached out to me who need service hours, so I'm extending, uh, my volunteers beyond the scouts, cause I had, uh, people come to me and say, hey, uh, I need some service hours. Your boy scout, can you help me out? I told them, uh, yeah, sure, I gave a couple people a call today and I'll have some hands.
Good.
It's just attaching the flags to the poles and toppers on them.
Yep. When do you turn eighteen?
Oh, I don't turn eighteen for two more years.
Funny time to do the paperwork.
Oh, yeah, it might take up most of those two years.
Usually does. How many more merit badges do you need?
Uh, I'm working on the last one currently. My troop's doing it, so I'm doing it with them.
Good.
Good for you.
How's your mother doing through all this? She looks a little stressed back there.
Yeah.
A proud.
Yeah, the mothers normally get a little stressed with Eagle Scout projects, but.
Who's, who's more nervous sitting at that table, you or your mom?
Uh, I'm not too nervous, so probably her.
Well, well, mom, both of my boys completed their projects their sophomore years of high school. Both of them got their eagle about a day before they turned eighteen. So it's the paperwork that's the killer. So make sure you get right on that.
Well, you handled yourself very well, Matt. Did a nice show.
Thank you.
Yep, well done. Thank you.
We'll see if we can help you out.
All right.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Can I take some action later?
Sure. No, I'm prepared, but I'm ready, my backup. All right, ready? Um, move to accept a gift donation in the amount of three thousand dollars to the recreation to maintain and repair skate park from the Friends of Foxborough Skate Park.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. A move to accept, accept a gift donation in the amount of two hundred dollars to veteran services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Patrick Lyons Greenhouse, Inc.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. Uh, move to approve to gift donation in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to the veteran services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from the Technical Support International, Inc.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of fifty dollars to veteran services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from the Central Street Garage, Inc.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. Uh, move to accept a gift donation in the amount of fifty dollars to veteran services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Sheen Counseling.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of twenty-five dollars to veteran services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Josephine and Douglas Miller.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. A move to accept a gift donation in the amount of fifty dollars to veteran services for the Iraq and Afghanistan War Memorial from Roberta and Edward McIntyre.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to the Boydin Library for the annual gift for Eastern Children's Museum passes from the Foxborough J.C.'s.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars to the Boydin Library for the annual donation for the museum gift fund from the Lakeview Pavilion Charitable Foundation.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. Do you wanna do the minutes individually or accept them all as a group? There's, um, one, two, three, five of them.
Was everybody there?
I have to recuse myself for one of them, cause I was absent.
Yeah, why don't we do them individually?
Individually, okay. Uh, move to approve the nine sixteen, twenty sixteen Board of Selectmen Minutes.
Second.
Motion made second.
Actually, hold on, I was absent, I'm sorry.
Can't second that?
No.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. Uh, move to approve the, uh, nine twenty, twenty sixteen Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. Uh, move to approve the one ten, twenty seventeen Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Sure.
I was actually on another set of minutes.
It's actually, no, I can't do that one. I wasn't there.
I'll second it. Motion made second. Any further discussion?
Computer stuff is really speeding things up.
All those in favor?
Aye. Um, move to approve the one twenty-four, twenty seventeen Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the three seven, twenty seventeen Board of Selectmen Meeting Minutes.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion?
I have to recuse myself. I was absent that day.
You were absent? Did you get a note?
I got a ticket.
All those in favor?
And lastly, uh, move to approve the Foxborough Founder's Day Boot Drive on five twenty-seven, twenty seventeen to raise funds for fireworks. And that will be from seven AM to one PM.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And good luck to David Fizzler. Thank you for doing that again this year. That's a, that's a thankless task. Okay, uh, is everybody here for the planning board? That needs to be here? No? You want more person? Okay.
She's way too fast.
Yeah, we can, we can do a selectmen's update. First of all, I'm happy to be back, as I stated earlier, and wanna thank the board members for the support. By keeping things status quo, try and keep it an inclusive board. I think that was one of my, my major goals, not to single out one person, but get everybody involved. Hopefully, we, we've done that and we can continue to do that. Just wanna say thank you to A.J. Dooley and Tina Belanger and the rest of the cleanup crew. Uh, it was another suc- successful cleanup Foxborough day. One of the things that, that I noticed and a lot of people were noticing was, there was a lot less trash this year than it has been in years past. And part of that was lack of snow, obviously, but, um, I think the other, the other part of it is, it's, it's starting to take hold. Uh, I firmly believe that, so, um, let's, let's keep it up and, you know, make it bigger and better, uh, next year. And then also, there was, um, the Narcon, Narcan training and drug takeback. I didn't attend that. Tim, did you go?
Yeah, Mayor Beth was there. You wanna talk? I, I caught the tail end of it, but I thought it was well attended and they had, um, a lot of good discussion and a lot of good staff that was there.
Right, it was, um, a joint, uh, you know, effort on behalf of our Safe Foxborough, Safe Foxborough Group, the Foxborough Coalition, which covers Franklin, Rhythm, and a presenter from BAMC who actually provided after, um, after the presentation, Narcan to everybody to take home. And, you know, talked about how to administer it, how to, uh, recognize the signs, how to save a life. And I'd say we had probably twenty-five people take, um, advantage of the training. Special thanks to, um, the Foxborough PD, the chief was there, um, Scott Taggart, uh, Scott Austin. It was really a good day, I thought, um, very, very good conversation, questions, and, um, a great awareness cause.
Do you know, um, offhand, how many, how many pounds of medications they, they collected?
When I was there, from ten to twelve, there had to be at least twelve.
Boxes.
Huge cartons that were, um, filled. And, uh, it continued on till two o'clock, so I'm not sure how many, but it was really successful takeback.
Right, and I, and I know, um, right outside the dispatcher's, uh, window, they have the, the drug, the drug box that anybody can drop off expired medications at any time into the drug box. You don't, you don't have to wait until, till they do a drug takeback day. It's, it's available anytime, so.
Yeah, especially in Foxborough where you, if you put it down the, the drain or your toilet, it ends up, most places are on septic systems, so it has a chance of getting in the groundwater, so take advantage of the free service. And one thing I noticed too is you, you forget about it, but if, if you took the Narcan training when it was offered, I think it was a year or so ago I took it, it expires. And a lot of people keep it in their car and case in the heat in the winter. But the Narcan that they were giving out, uh, over the weekend, it's expensive, but it was free. Subsidized, but it was free. And I think it's twice as effective as the old Narcan, so if you have the old stuff, get rid of it and, and pick up the new one.
It's also less cumbersome. Usually there's three pieces that you have to attach, like an atomizer, a sort of a plunger, and then the medication itself. And this one is an all-in-one tiny, one, you know, uh, one-shot deal.
Looks like an EpiPen almost.
Yeah, it's a nasal administering, um, where you don't have to do both nostrils, you can just do one. It was, it was really informational. I, I think a lot of people got a lot out of it.
Good. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah, uh, just wanna let everybody aware of, um, the great job that Heather did around the common, all the new flower pots are out, soils in them, just waiting until the weather gets a little more stable. So we went from about twelve or thirteen whiskey barrels inside the common to twenty-five self-watering plant, uh, pots all around the common.
Great.
So, uh, Heather did a good job spearing that up and I was telling Jim before the meeting too, my wife and I took a walk around the Lane property over the weekend and, and that property's coming out great.
Yeah, it looks great.
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
So do, Chris, do you know if they, they have planters for the new, new hanging planters as well? They have plants for those as well?
That Dave is doing all the hanging ones, um, nothing to do with any of that.
Okay, great.
So Heather has people adopting every one of those pots, so as far as I know, every pot has been adopted by, you know, somebody in town to plant.
Excellent, as it should be. That's a great way to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really nice to be able to see people participate in like that. That's great.
Yep, I agree. You waiting for anybody? You wanna?
Foxborough Cultural Council.
Yeah.
Cultural Council.
Yep. You ready?
Yes.
Come on up.
Go.
Thanks for having me.
I noticed on the agenda that you were ahead of us, so I'm sorry if you were waiting. I had another presentation at the Ahearn.
Nope, nope, we're skipping around, cause planning board's not ready. We're working on it.
Hopefully, and then. Great, um, so thank you for having us. I'm Jared Craig. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Foxborough Cultural Council. Um, and I'm here to present, uh, Jackie Howe and nominate her officially, uh, to join the Cultural Council. I think that Jackie will be a huge asset and, uh, she's already come on board and volunteered in several ways to help us. She's putting together some events for Founder's Day on our behalf and, uh, we're planning to have a booth there. We're gonna have an upcoming plant sale and we have plans to, uh, host a booth at the Foxborough Rex Farmer's Market this summer. So as an organization, we're planning to collaborate with o- other local organizations and especially those that share our focus on families and children. Also pertaining to the arts, humanities, and sciences, and I think Jackie, uh, will be a huge asset to all of those. I'm gonna let her speak for herself, but her own experience and expertise and what she hopes to bring to the council. So this is Jackie Howe.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, I'm a new resident of Foxborough. I moved out here with my husband. Um, in November, we have a one-year-old, uh, baby. So I'm a new mom and stay at home now, so I'm really interested, uh, particularly now in, uh, community and creating a space for my son that has lots of cultural opportunities. But a little bit about my background, um, I grew up doing theater all through middle school, high school. That was really my passion. And then I went to Boston College and I majored in theater and elementary education. So I did all the plays through Boston College, was really part of the arts community there. And upon graduating, I actually taught fifth grade for four years over at Saint Mary's in Brookline. I don't know if anyone's familiar. Um, but while I was there, I always incorporated the arts into the classroom because I'm a firm believer in using arts to help educate kids and awaken their interest in other subjects, whether it's history or science or English. And then I decided to go back to school. I went to Boston University and I got my master's in arts administration with a graduate. with a graduate, uh, certificate in fundraising. And I, uh, worked in fundraising for Speakeasy Stage Company. It's a professional theater company in Boston for a couple of years. Um, so I'm, what I'm really hoping to bring to the council is my, uh, background in fundraising. I, I was doing that before I, um, the, decided to be a stay-at-home. I was doing that for four or five years. Um, so I have a lot of experience planning events, um, seeking funds from individual donors and foundations. Um, I actually did, on the grantee side of things, have some interactions with the Massachusetts Cultural Council, so I'm interested in helping to bring some of that expertise to the council. But also just as a mom and a new resident, I'm really invested in, uh, the direction that the community takes with providing these opportunities and experiences for its residents.
Any questions from the board?
Extremely qualified. Thanks for, um, for volunteering.
No, I'm excited.
Yeah, I, I met Jackie at the, um, at the grant recipient, uh, gathering, and, uh, she was telling me about her, her fundraising. I was like, oh, you're, you're in the right place. I gotta tell you, you know, seeing the presentation by some of those kids, I mean, the talent that's out there is, is amazing.
It's a great event.
And, um,
Thanks for coming.
You know, I think they're, they're probably the one organization that does more with less, um, than, than any, any other group in town, I, I would think. So, you're a very welcome addition, I'm su- I'm sure. I'm sure Jared's thrilled to have you.
Whenever you're ready to get back in the workforce, give me a call.
End of job.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say, I'm, I'm extremely pleased, and I know everybody here is in the board as well, extremely pleased with the direction that this committee has taken. I mean, during the past year, I see some tremendous talent, including all, both of you that are here tonight, come onto this committee, which in the direction it's headed is, is really very exciting. And so I'm really pleased to see the, the level of interest and the lo- especially in the cultural areas. A lot of communities forget about that, but it's a really important part of the fabric of a community. And I think the fact that you're taking such, uh, progressive steps in addressing that is really, really quite exciting for me to see that. So, congratulations, and best of luck to you both.
Thanks.
It's nice to hear. Thanks. It's good to see Pam getting, getting some help. She's drowning a little bit.
Pam's building an empire.
Motion?
Uh, move to, um, appoint, uh, Jaclyn Howe as the newest member of the, uh, Foxborough Cultural Council.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
So much luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
They have a quorum now.
Okay, come on up, Kevin. Welcome, Mr. Rhodes. Glad you can make it.
It's my bodyguard.
Good evening. Thanks for being patient. So, we need to, uh,
Need to order?
Yeah. It being almost exactly seven fifty-five PM, Planning Board will call this meeting to order.
Be a second.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. Very good.
Okay.
So we are here this evening on our annual request to reappoint Tracy Vasili as, um, our associate member. Based on the way things were structured, um, we have to do this as a joint appointment between, uh, our board and the Board of Selectmen. Tracy's been a terrific member. She really actually comes with, you know, a different perspective than some of the other people on the board. She's a great questioner. She's thoughtful. We're very happy with her. And we would like you to, along with us, reappoint her in the associate role.
Any questions from the board?
So the associate position is only a one-year position? It has to be re-up? It's year, it's year, it's year to year. Originally, it was, it was always supposed to be a year-to-year position. Originally, it was supposed to be appointed specifically by the Planning Board. Joan Sozio, at the time, stood up at town meeting and said, gee, you know, I think we ought to have the Selectmen involved, so that's why we do it jointly.
Lucky you.
Maybe we'll put something on the fall town meeting.
Gary, you were associate member for a period of time, right?
Yes, three, three years, I believe.
Yes. Any other questions?
No reservations at all?
Just, just to say that, um, Tracy has been a wonderful member of the Planning Board, and she has embraced the master plan.
Yes, she has.
I have. I wanted to buy a sh- I'm surprised you don't have your shirt.
They all made fun of me. When I first joined, I wasn't a huge fan of the master plan, and then I really got on board, as Jenny said. And I was gonna have a per- like a T-shirt made that said, I love the master plan, shared it with my fellow board members, and it was violently shot down.
I don't know, we're all waiting for our, for our sizes to be taken.
If I buy it, you have to wear it.
Sounds like a Founder's Day.
Yeah, I'm walking town now.
One of them is that, right? At that point.
Don't worry, the town manager and the Board of Selectmen will get some too.
But I like the pa- I like the master plan too, so I got like a little.
What about the, I love the personnel board?
That'll be on the back.
Dual duty.
All right, uh, any more questions? See you none. We have motion?
Uh, move to reappoint Tracy Vasili as an associate member of the, uh, Planning Board with a term expiring five one twenty eighteen.
Second.
Motion made, second. Any further discussion? See you none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Jared and I just make a comment that, uh, both Tracy and Gary are really valued members of the Personnel Board as well, and, um, they work really hard, uh, not only on master plan, but on personnel policies, and really, really appreciate their support and guidance.
Thank you for your service.
Before you leave, just a general question. Tomorrow morning, uh, at the library, there's a second round of the downtown revitalization.
Downtown revitalization, I'm telling you.
You want to talk about that for se- in case people are around tomorrow, if they wanted to come?
Yeah, I mean, this is gonna be a, um, a presentation and a discussion, uh, sponsored by MAPC. It's gonna, um, they're gonna, uh, actually do their report, which is, uh, it is online. You can, uh, download it. But I think they, they want to, uh, do their report, talk about what input they received from various business owners, property owners in the downtown, get some of their ideas out there, meaning those business and property owners, as well as MAP's recommendations on how they think they can make the downtown a more vibrant, um, downtown than it is currently. And we're all looking forward to that. We're all looking forward to hearing what some of those concepts are from them, and seeing how we can incorporate it into, you know, the section of the master plan that we already have, and make adjustments.
Right, and that, that was funded through a grant that, uh,
Correct.
that Paige was able to put together
Right.
with support from the Economic Development Committee.
Steve Winter and, and some other individuals there who have been working on it. And we're looking forward to hearing what they have to say and participate. If anybody would like to come, it's gonna be at the library. It's at eight-thirty in the morning. It should last an hour and a half or two hours.
Good. Thank you.
Very good.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Motion closed.
Yes. Is that your motion?
Motion closed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, good night.
And then there was Berra.
Nobody wants to hear about the town manager's evaluation?
Yeah. That's the big news to me.
That's next on the agenda.
It is.
Sure is.
Did you complete your evaluation on Berra?
You know, I, I don't get paid enough to do that, unfortunately. But if you want to hire me as the evaluator of the town manager, I'd be most, most gladly accept that.
Wait, you got anything to say about that? So, hey, everybody filled out, uh, evaluation and sent it in to Mary Beth, and I think you tallied all the results and created a, a single summary?
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to update us on the?
Sure. Um, I'll be happy to present the highlights of, of Bill's, um, evaluation summary covering the period of, um, April twenty sixteen to April twenty seventeen. It's hard to believe this is my third presentation of Bill's evaluation.
Me too.
The time has flown. Um, so the comments, as Dave said, were compiled by all of the selectmen's, um, submission, submissions to me, and, um, the categories that we, um, encompass on the evaluation form are leadership and staff effectiveness. The board felt, um, that Bill has definitely achieved that. Um, planning and organizing, where he received grades of exceeded across the board in that. Communication and community relations, again, was a category where he exceeded, um, the rankings. In problem-solving, innovation, and decision-making, um, there was a, a mix of exceeded and achieved. Budget, financial management, achieved. Customer service and quality of service, that's an exceeded and achieved category. His personal, professional, and organizational inte- integrity, everybody was unanimously, um, rating him as exceptional. Cross-departmental organizational management, that, again, was achieved. So as you can see, the, um, results were glowing and, um, very, very good in those categories. Together, the group submitted to me prior year accomplishments that they felt Bill had, um, done a great job in accomplishing. And a lot of them were repeated through, so I'd have three or four people saying the same thing. So I'll just go through the quick, a quick list, um, of what people felt his prior year accomplishments were. The town hall project, the recruitment of the police chief, uh, regional dispatch, economic development, and awareness of the areas that need economic development, solar power project completion, um, achieving the, uh, in the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar state grant for the new Forbes Crossing, um, continued communication with our community partners, including Craft Group, uh, solution to the, uh, Board of Selectmen budget concerns regarding taxing to the limit. The idea of the budget summit, that's soon to happen this summer. The very sensitive handling of the Sheen issue, and, uh, steady progress on HR problems, updating the needs of the, as, as they arise in job descriptions, policies, et cetera. For objectives for the coming year, that's a normal part of an evaluation where you sort of set goals, um, for what the board would like to see. Those, again, we, I saw a lot of repeated comments in that area. The number one item was the downtown redevelopment, including the fire station sale, uh, Route One development, the MBTA commuter rail pilot program, uh, the budget summit again was mentioned. The Craft Group and community partner relationships were mentioned. Educating the community on town finances, uh, changing, looking at changing the CIP process, continuing to look at ways to reduce spending, and continuing along with regional dispatch. So those were the objectives that were laid out. And then I just wanted to share with you some of the, um, overall comments. Um, I know it's probably very awkward to sit here and hear people talk about you, but, um, these I thought were very much worth sharing. These are all quotes from the evaluation. The first one is, "Bill is professional and has experience that is immeasurable. He has steadied the ship over the last three years and is a pleasure to work with. I look forward to great things over the next three years with Bill's leadership." Next, "Bill has done a good job as town manager. He and his team have accomplished and finished a lot of initiatives that the town has been working on for a long time." The next comment, "Overall, Mr. Keegan is doing an excellent job in addressing the needs and issues of the Keegan era while still dealing with all of those previous administrations. Dealing with five Board of Selectmen members can be difficult. I would hope that he realizes that each of us has a voice and concerns that he should listen to." And finally, I feel, um, the last comment is, "I feel that the town manager's position was well-advertised, vetted, and Mr. Keegan had exemplary qualifications to be able to meet the job description. He has fulfilled the role as expected and has displayed integrity and time commitment. The town of Foxborough is in a good financial position and managed well. My expectations were very high, and he has met them. Mr. Keegan's self-evaluation was well-written and direct, and I take no exceptions to his self-evaluation." And that's submitted by me on the first.
Okay.
Any questions?
Yeah, so just for, for clarification, part of the evaluation process is Bill's required to do a self-evaluation. And I, I found that self-evaluation brutally honest. You know, a lot of times, you know, people will kind of sugarcoat it and, and think they're doing better than they are. But in, in Bill's case, he was, he was honest. He knows, he knows where, where his limitations are. He knows what he needs to improve on. And, you know, that's, that's what you want people to be, is, is be honest. And, and I think that was, that was reflected in, in our individual evaluations based on, on the summary. I mean, I think, I think we were all, took a hard look at this, and when you're doing evaluations, and we've talked about it, uh, before, you have to be honest with people. And you, you're doing nobody a, a service if you, if you just sugarcoat it, because at some point, you may have to, to let somebody go. Not that, not saying we're gonna let you go.
I hope not.
But I'm just saying, the, the evaluation process, um, it's so important to be honest, not only for, with the employee, but as, as, as a manager. You have to be honest with, with each other because, um, you know, people need to know where they stand. And if you want people to improve, they need to know where their shortcomings are if they don't, if they can't identify them themselves. So, thanks for, for doing that, Bill.
I appreciate that. I appreciate it.
So, there was, uh, we're not gonna talk about, about salaries tonight because we have to, we have to talk about, uh, the contract because your, your contract's expiring.
On June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. So we'll, we'll roll that all into, into the contract negotiations.
And just in the spirit of, you know, letting the board have some time to think about it, um, I presented this, you know, summary to you, and, um, I just have to say, the, the comments were so aligned this year, um, that it was, you know, really, really an easy task to, uh, put all of this together, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I could just say a few words. I, Chris, I want to thank all of you for, uh, for, for the comments and the, and the support and the, and the, uh, and the progress that we're making collectively. I mean, I think, um, is, and I just, in, in following from your comments, Dave, I think, you know, I never guarantee you perfection when I, when I took this job, but I guaranteed you that I would work hard, and I'd provide you with integrity, and do the best I possibly could in all, in all phases of the game, uh, of the, uh, that, that, that we have to do to get, to bring all the aspects of what's great about this community together. And I think during the past three years, I look back, we've done, made tremendous progress in a lot of ways. We still have a lot of work to do. But I will tell you that it's, you know, if I didn't see the progress being made, I probably wouldn't be as, as, as excited as I am right now about where the future really belongs in this community, and I'm, and I think that, um, I'm very excited about. I see, uh, so much progress in so many different areas that the next three years are gonna be significantly different than the past three. And that, um, you know, I just, I appreciate the fact that I've had your support, I've had my staff support, who are tremendous, and, um, you know, and all the department heads, employees, everybody who does, all, we're all running in the same direction, you know? And sometimes we, we hit a few bumps along the way, but that's to be expected. That's the normal part of the process. But you know what? In the end, we're all, we're all running in the same direction. We're making tremendous, tremendous progress towards that finish line. So, again, I thank everybody, and, and the community as a whole, this is, has been really tremendous and very receptive to the ideas that we put forward together, and I, I really appreciate that as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Bill. If you want to continue, you're up.
Yeah, I guess. So, um, let me just say, uh, this past week, um, I spoke at the Economic Development Committee, um, Subcommittee Meeting at, for the Chamber at the, uh, Renaissance Hotel on Friday, um, Friday morning, and, uh, that was really well-received. There was a, myself, uh, the town manager from Norton, and the, uh, and the substitute manager, substitute person for, for Mansfield, as they don't have a manager right now. And we did a presentation on all the economic development issues that we have focused on here in Foxborough, and as well in the region. And it's actually quite interesting to watch, and it's, and if you take a look at it from a more, from a bigger perspective, on a region-wide perspective, this is a really great place to be right now. So, uh, there were so many great things going on, uh, not just in Foxborough, but in Mansfield, and Norton, and Eastern for that matter. So it's really, um, it's quite, it's quite interesting to hear what other people are doing, but, you know, I'm also very proud about what we're doing here in Foxborough. We've developed with, with the master plan, and we're following the master plan, looking at the development nodes and all the, the different things that, that, that people are excited about doing and what's happening right now. So that was really well-received, and we got, we got, uh, a lot of folks that really get, saying a lot of positive things about, you know, where the direction is headed. I just want to remind folks that Monday is, next Monday is annual town, any night, so we do hope that folks will turn out for that, and where we, where that becomes the legislative body for the town, where the town's- where the town's business is conducted. We do that twice a year, and so we hope folks will be able to come out and support the efforts that we're putting forward in preparation for the next fiscal year. In support of that effort today, earlier today, we taped the show. It was Mary Beth, Randy, myself, and Paige Duncan talked about the warrant and what was contained in the warrant, the 24 articles. We provided a summary of those articles, and that'll be running this week, so that folks can be fully informed about what they're, what to be voting on. There was a mother meeting last week with the seniors to try and explain the warrant to them as well. So the folks that really do come out and vote typically, a lot of them are seniors, they will show up. And this time, you know, we're doing, every time, we're trying to do, take that extra step and try and inform them more about what they're voting on, so they don't come in with a surprised appearance or a surprised understanding of the situation. So that is moving forward. The communication end is working out really, really well. On the fun side, I wanted to just say that we got a letter from Flowery Branch, Flowery Branch, Georgia, today, thanking us for the second stuff that we, second package we sent down to them. The first package, in case you hadn't heard, was somewhat damaged by FedEx, unfortunately, and during shipment. And interesting enough, all the Patriots gear seemed to disappear during, when the box was open, everything was gone. But all the Patriots stuff was gone, so obviously, there were some Patriots fans in Memphis, Tennessee, when they're in the processing facility, so...
Somebody stole the Brady jersey?
Yeah. They could be behind that, you know, they could have been behind that effort. So we sent down some additional things that, and some other local flavored types of things, and we followed up with a second package, and they were very, very appreciative. And I just want to read the letter I received from Kevin Hutchinson, who was the assistant manager in the city. And he said, "To the generous victors of Foxborough, we would all like to thank you for your follow-up gifts. It was an unfortunate situation with the last package, but you're very thoughtful, and you're very thoughtful. We greatly appreciate you reselling the items. The Neko wafers didn't last five minutes. I look forward to our Week Seven rematch. I am sure the Falcons are too. Should any of you ever find yourself in the area, please stop in to see us. We will always have a glass of sweet tea waiting for you. Best regards, Kevin Hutchinson and the rest of the crew at Flowery Branch." I will note, by the way, that I did get a glimpse of Flowery Branch during the NFL draft. They actually announced one of the Falcons' draft picks from Flowery Branch during the NFL draft. I was in the later rounds, I think it was round six or seven, that they actually made an announcement there, so it's great to see that. So hello again to our folks in the South, and it was always great, it's always great to see the trophy still standing here in this community. So it's great to see that. And then this goes on the heels of something that I was able to announce two years ago, is that my daughter won her first Emmy Award. And then last Sunday night, she won her second. So she hasn't hit 29 yet, and she's already won two Emmy Awards. So congratulations to her. I'm very excited for her. She's ABC, she's a producer at ABC, Good Morning America, and they won the Emmy Award for the best morning show in America. So very excited for her, and it's gonna be a big year for her, and so many different things coming on. Congratulations. So thank you.
Pretty impressive.
So thank you. That's all I had.
Mary Beth?
I think we covered most of it. Wanted to thank all the folks from our Safe Foxborough Committee for coming out to the Narcan Training and to Jim for all that support. As Bill said, we've been on the warrant roadshow. Last week, Bob Cutler, Randy, Paige, and I presented to the seniors and went through a lot of the articles, especially the three articles, eight, nine, and 10, that cover the senior tax breaks. We spent a lot of time talking about those. Very engaged discussion, though. Always love our monthly meetings with the seniors. They ask great questions. And then after months and months of talking about it, we have finally kicked off our health insurance negotiation process. It's a really cumbersome timeline that we're required to follow. And we had our first informational meeting with the IAC members. A letter just went out to the union presidents to appoint PEC members, which are the voting members to negotiate health insurance with us across all the town and school bargaining units. And our first meeting will be May 11th, so I'm looking forward to engaging in that process. Our team is prepared with the right information, and we're hoping that we can get it done in one or two meetings in a way that saves not only the employees' money, but also the town with planned design changes. And I was gonna remind everybody about the MAPC presentation tomorrow, but we've already done that. Thank you.
There's one other thing I want to mention. I want to say thanks to A.J. Dooley and the crew, all the folks who participated in the cleanup. I was able to participate this year, and I'll tell you, I have to agree with you, it really wasn't nearly as dirty as I've seen in all the time. So I'm glad to see folks are being a lot more conscious about throwing stuff out and onto the environment. And it's a pleasure to be able to see the number of people that came out and participated in that effort. It was a busy day, so Mary Beth did the drug turn back, and I did the trash. And it was a good day all in all for all of us, so I was glad to see the community being so supportive for that effort.
I also want to thank Adrian Waddle, who's probably one of the biggest human beings I've ever seen in my life. He was great. He was, you know, great with the kids and anybody who came up, wanted to have a chat with them. He was very outgoing and, you know, thanks to the Kraft Group for participating, so...
That's great.
A quick question, if I could. So the ballot question on marijuana, put a ban in Foxborough.
Yes.
Now, the last, Article 12, the warrant article for...
Twenty-four.
I'm sorry, twenty-fourth, the last one. That's not moot now. It still has to be discussed and voted on.
Yeah, so thank you for raising...
There's a lot of confusion about that.
Yeah, so to be clear about that, and so I hope as many people listening that will hear this, is that, and we did clarify that today in the show as well. So that Article 24 does need to still get passed, because what that does now is actually puts the bylaw in place that will actually limit the sale of marijuana in the community. So step one was to get a flavor for the community, how the community felt about the issue. It passed by a margin of 62% to 38%, which is a pretty significant margin. And as such, the, but the bylaw itself still needs to be acted on favorably at the meeting on Monday night.
So if the bylaw doesn't pass, the referendum yesterday doesn't carry over?
No, that's right.
That was just to take the temperature of the...
They'll take the temperature of the community. And so what happens is that you would, the only way that that could get acted on again would be to revisit the issue of the bylaw issue at the fall town meeting, unless something else happens with the legislature at this point. But right now, it seems to be the only mechanism that we could revisit it, is to go back to town with another article to reconsider it.
Yeah, it's a very unusual circumstance, that's why I think there's a lot of confusion about that.
Can I ask a question? Senator Timolty will be, I believe it's Wednesday, is his final day. I was wondering if the town of Foxborough could send a letter of thanks to him?
Absolutely.
He's been very supportive for many, many years and...
So it's Wednesday of this week?
I think it's Wednesday. I think. It's coming up anyway.
Yeah, okay.
But if we could, and could we sign it all?
Sure, by all means.
Maybe bring it to town meeting. You can sign it on Monday. Or is that too late? Well, no, I mean, whenever we send it.
You don't need to send it by Wednesday.
Right, right.
Okay.
Maybe we could get a citation or something from the town to thanking him? He's been giving a, he's been giving a lot of citations to the town. Give him one.
That's great. Great idea.
Thanks, Shane.
We'll miss him on the Founder's Day parade. Makes it every year.
Mira?
So that was a very long meeting. Just a quick question to confirm. So are all of you guys going to be donating to that Scouts project? I see a bunch of you took out the things.
We are now.
You already did, and the four of you pulled stuff.
Are you gonna donate?
You know, maybe. We will see. I am not a public official. So yes, you already did, and the four of you haven't, but you will.
Yep.
Great. All right. Well, that's about it.
Big news week.
Oh, believe me, today's a big news week. It's just you guys aren't much news.
We like it that way. Believe me.
Move to a chair?
Second.
All those in favor? Everybody?
Good night. Thanks, Barrett.